The time is now seven thirty. I would like to call this regular monthly, this monthly meeting of the Downersville Public Library Board of Trustees, or Caitlin, could you proceed with the roll call?
Yes. Trustee Earl?
Here.
Trustee Evelyn?
Here.
Trustee DeGani?
Here.
Trustee Humphreys?
Here.
Trustee Stapleton?
Here.
Trustee Greer?
Here. Thank you very much. We would like to take this opportunity to welcome our visitors. Thank you very much for your interest in the library. We're now on to Agenda Item Number Four, the Approval of Minutes. Does anybody have any questions or comments on last month's minutes? I'll make a motion then to approve the minutes that have been seconded. Here we have a motion to approve the minutes that has been seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes have been approved. We're now on to Agenda Item Number Five, Financial Matters. Julie, would you let us know where we are financial?
All right. These are the financials through the end of July. That puts us at about fifty-eight percent of the way through the fiscal year. We are going strong for the revenue at this point, and all budget lines seem to be on track. Anything that is over that fifty-eight percent is anticipated. There are some like the insurances that we pay in bulk, so, or pay annually, so those are regularly anticipated, so things are going well. And, anybody have a question?
Any questions? We have a motion to approve Agenda Item Number Five, Financial Matters. I'll make a motion to approve the financial matters that were presented in the packet. And I'll second it. We have a motion on Agenda Item Number Five, to approve Agenda Item Number Five, Financial Matters, that has been seconded. Caitlin, could you proceed with the roll call?
Trustee Earl?
Yes.
Trustee Evelyn?
Yes.
Trustee DeGani?
Yes.
Trustee Humphreys?
Yes.
Trustee Stapleton?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
Yes. We are now on to Agenda Item Number Six, Public Comment on Agenda Items. Do we have any public comment on Agenda Items? Thank you very much. On to Agenda Item Number Seven, Public Comment on Any Other Library Business. Thank you. We're now on to Agenda Item Number Eight, New Business, Alara Engineering Proposal. Proceed with the eight.
So you all have the proposal from Alara Engineering in your packet. About Saint Mary from Alara is here tonight. So, this, between our last meeting and tonight, Ian Norah, our Facilities Manager, met with Saint Mary from Alara to discuss this project and to look at things and, and talk about this proposal, and really, they decided, having brought in their expertise on timeline, and really getting us to that optimal construction timeline, that we should get started with this project now. So, yes, as in, now. So, the cost is in line for the total project. As you can see, they were very thorough in their proposal. They will help us through the entire, they will take care of the specifications, help us through the entire budgeting project, the process, make the recommendation to award, just like we'll be seeing tonight on the 2018 construction project, and help us through the functional testing, doing site visits during the actual construction, et cetera. And this does include the boilers, as well as the HVAC and controls, and as you know, we did move that boiler portion of the capital needs forward, partially because when we went ahead to get some other work done on those boilers, we did find that those, our boilers are considered obsolete now, and those parts are not readily available anymore. So it did seem prudent to move that forward. So, we are requesting your approval of the proposal from Alara Engineering.
Just one question. Does the forty-four K come out of the capital budget?
Capital. This is all part of the project budget for 2019, so that, that aggregate number in the budget, in the capital, library capital replacement fund, the village engineering, it does cover that portion as well as the construction.
Two, one administrative question, one technical. The, like most of our lenders, payment is due within thirty days. With interest added, if we don't make that, sometimes we fudge a little bit on that, but is, is that okay? Thirty days on this one, because we don't want to miss the payment on this.
Wasn't it, maybe I was missing anything, but I thought there was a, yeah, there was a schedule.
There's, yeah. It's a, like, of course, anticipated project schedule?
Well, project schedule, but specifically the, the payment of the bill to Alara, there's a down payment and then progress payments. They're invoiced monthly, and they're due within thirty days, and I just want to ensure that that fits our payment schedule appropriately. Okay?
Generally, yes.
You're not, so that's fine. The other question I had referred, there's a conclusion to asbestos payment, and I'm wondering if we anticipate that, or is that just a contingency?
It's a contingency, as far as asbestos. We put that in as a general statement, not knowing that there's asbestos in the building. Based on the age of this facility, I would not anticipate that being the case, but we have to define that as outside our scope of work. If we, if we expect any, we will advise you of that. If the contractor finds it, they will certainly advise you of that.
And they'll tell us. That's, that's, that's fine. Thank you.
You know, I thought it was very comprehensive. Looked good. I liked that it went to Ian. No, it's being looked at closely.
Yeah, I have dealt with a lot of these, and this is an excellent proposal, and I expect excellent work. The definition between construction engineering and construction management, I appreciate it as well, that was, that was good to see specified. If there's no other issues, I'll move the approval of this.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the Alara Engineering Proposal that has been seconded. We should have a roll call on this.
Trustee Earl?
Yes.
Trustee Evelyn?
Yes.
Trustee DeGani?
Yes.
Trustee Humphreys?
Yes.
Trustee Stapleton?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
Yes. The proposal has been approved. Thank you. We're now on to Agenda Item Eight-B, Finance Policy. And Julie, would you like to just discuss the changes or the update to the finance policy?
The main update to the finance policy is actually the change in the Illinois Municipal Code that raises the threshold for public bidding from twenty thousand to twenty-five thousand dollars. So we went ahead and made that update throughout the purchasing section of the policy. There is also one small change that we will be making, from what was in your packet, to the final, in Section six point two, the end of the first line, the word upon was separated into up on, and thank you Spellcheck for not helping us when we made words. If anybody has any questions, that is, by, most of this finance policy is exactly what was in previous policy, just put together in a new format.
Any questions on the finance policy?
You want me to approve?
Yes.
Any more questions?
Yeah.
I hope we approve the finance policy.
Second?
Okay, we have a motion to approve the new finance policy that has been seconded. I think we should just have a roll call on this, since it involves finances.
Yep, sure. Trustee Earl?
Yes.
Trustee Evelyn?
Yes.
Trustee DeGani?
Yes.
Trustee Humphreys?
Yes.
Trustee Stapleton?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
Yes. Thank you. Finance policy has been approved. We're now on to Agenda Item Nine-A, Unfinished Business, Twenty-Nineteen Budget and Levy.
This is the fun part. Traumatic. All righty then.
Beautiful start.
I love being in your head. Nobody can do this either.
Thirty-three. I think it's page thirty-three.
Okay. Thank you. Oh, I got short spelled, but, uh... So, for the budget, our operating budget as presented is essentially flat from the prior year. It is eleven thousand five hundred dollars different from the twenty-eighteen budget, and this is really the year of offsetting changes in our budget. The IMRF rate reduction and the changes that we made in some staffing are, really offset the increase in employee benefit premiums, that change that we made a couple of months ago, and the three percent increase in wage and salary lines. So if those really do offset, it brings us, the difference in salary and benefits line is four thousand six hundred dollars approximately. So that really does bring us right back to where we want to be. And so you can see that this is the, the salary and benefits portion of the simple high expenditures, so you can see it's forty-five hundred dollars different, only a point one percent difference, and then down on the, everything else in the budget, all the non-personnel costs, the difference is just under seven thousand dollars. The main difference in this budget is actually the change to the newsletter to increase us from eight pages to twelve pages. So that's where we are on those. The, for the capital replacement fund, the proposed expenditure is the six hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars, that is the estimated amount for the twenty-nineteen project, which you've just approved, moving forward with Alara Engineering. So that is the overall cost, including Alara and everything else. We will come in at the right number for that. All of our fund balances, under what is proposed, all of the fund balances come in at our targeted amounts. In the library fund, that targeted amount is three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, that's the operating reserve that's called out in the finance policy, and then the capital replacement fund balance, you all saw that, that breakdown when we were looking at the capital fund last month. So we really do hit all of our targets with this. So what is proposed here is a levy increase, and I'm going to go all the way down a little bit, that's through the whole, if anybody wants to see detail of the budget. So, we'll stop here. So it's a three percent increase to the overall levy over last year, so that's this one here, levy, three percent increase. So, the increase that is being used by the village, and that we are also using here for the equalized assessed valuation of property in the village, is five percent, which is a fairly high increase again. Last year we were at five point five percent, and as you know, that did really affect what happened to the operating rate, and what happened per hundred thousand dollars of home value that impact to our individual taxpayer. So, last year, our individual taxpayers' amount went down about a dollar ninety per hundred thousand dollars of valuation. What we're anticipating, using that three percent levy increase and the five percent EAV increase, is that we will again decrease the amount that each owner pays per hundred thousand dollars of valuation by about two dollars, about two dollars and six cents, the way the budget is right now, so fingers crossed, and that would also bring us to a reduced tax rate for the fourth year in a row. So, looking good as far as that is concerned. For the standards for Illinois Public Libraries, this budget shows that we are at seventy percent, which is the high end of the typical expenses for a public library, for salaries and benefits. You do tend, municipalities tend to be on the higher side of the percentages, rather as opposed to library districts, because municipalities don't generally pay for their utilities, or in the villages franchise agreement, so that, that difference in the budget makes a couple of percentage points difference on, on how much you use for salaries and benefits. But the other one I wanted to point out is that minimum twelve percent of operational expenses for collections, we are running at thirteen point two percent in this budget, so hitting all of our targets as far as the standards are concerned, and that's the expenditures by our chart. And it's always interesting to look at this for a public library, and remember that eighty-three percent of your operating expenses are spoken for once you have personnel and library materials. You don't have a lot of wiggle room outside of those two items. And again, libraries are very, very property tax dependent. Ninety-six percent of our budget of the revenues will come from property taxes. The next biggest is actually fines and fees, and, yeah, it's just nothing, nothing moves the needle but property taxes. And then we did include in your packet this year, the narratives that will be put, submitted to the village for inclusion in the village budget. This is due to the village by Friday for inclusion in the, their first preliminary draft that will go out in the very beginning of September, so. Any questions? Any thoughts or comments?
I'll make one comment or observation. We did have a fairly robust discussion on this last month, at a point at which we effectively think agreed for the most part on what the budget would look like in this particular meeting. And I would say, again, just from a big picture perspective, when you look at what Julie was mentioning, as far as salaries are increasing by three percent, and, and materials, which collectively they may have eighty-three percent, and presumably material costs are affected by inflation, you're at three percent or more. And so I think that three percent is a good number as far as the levy goes, accommodating the increase in the salaries, and then also accommodating the increases in costs that either are already, you know, in the pipeline or will be in twenty nineteen. Additional thoughts or comments?
I'm excited about this budget. I think that it shows, I like the word robust that you used in our discussions over the last couple of months. I think it's been examined pretty thoroughly. I think that it meets the needs and demands and hopes of our constituents, and we are fortunate in the EAV increase, which, you know, to some extent we've kind of been used to, except for a few years, and, but that's, that's a positive thing, that shows good management by the people who are running our government and our economy. So, I, we need to remember that our salary structure is going to be examined very thoroughly next year. You kind of kick the can a little bit on that issue, because the structure, the, that's not...
Merit increases and the compensation structure.
Yeah, the structure is, we're not changing that issue, it's kind of flat, and, and it, I think it's appropriate that that's done, but it's also appropriate every few years to make a thorough examination of it next year, because seventy percent of our budget is people, but almost a hundred percent of our satisfaction rating is our people. We've got to take care of our people, and we have to keep them, we have to pay them competitively, so, I'm not the concern, but I'm pretty excited to be able to have you.
Any additional thoughts or comments? All right, in that case, we have a motion to approve a proposed twenty-nineteen budget and levy.
So?
We have a second.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion that has been seconded to approve the twenty-nineteen budget and levy as presented. Caitlin, could you proceed with the roll call?
Trustee Earl?
Yes.
Trustee Evelyn?
Yes.
Trustee DeGani?
Yes.
Trustee Humphreys?
Yes.
Trustee Stapleton?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
Yes. The budget and levy has been approved in record time.
In a fast, correct, yeah.
Yes, you remember last year's.
Well, another good staff with us. Very well done.
Very well. Thank you. And the management team was great, they made sure that we tried to get everything in there.
Okay, and we're now on to Agenda Item Nine-B, which is, which is the twenty-eighteen construction project bid award.
All right. So, for the twenty-eighteen construction bid award, we do have the recommendation to award from Shales McNutt, submitted by Jason Perkmanis, our project manager, who is here to discuss, answer any questions you may have, particularly about things like the value engineering and the alternates and all of those good things. The estimated total cost with the value engineering and our selected alternates is eleven thousand four hundred dollars under the original budget for this project, and it does still include the entire thirty thousand dollar contingency line. We did remove from the project in that value engineering process, the decorative panels from the staff lounge, the alternates for the exhaust fans, which, yeah, Ian went ahead and did those consulting, and then there was also the alternate for the light fixtures, so we would not be improving that. What was changed in value engineering, just a couple of highlights, ceiling tiles, light fixtures, and the tile in the family restrooms, just making little minor tweaks similar, particularly for the tile. It is the exact same colors from the same manufacturer, it is simply a slightly different size.
Different size, I do remember.
Size.
Oh, size.
So, we are, and we do have Christine, our circulation manager, is here tonight to talk a little bit about the alternate six, the lobby reconfiguration, and the need for that portion of the project. Do you just want to say a few words to start?
Sure, sure. I, I don't know if everyone can see me, I'm so short, so I apologize. I just wanted to talk a little bit about the circulation department, that is the front-facing role really of the main floor, certainly of the library, and I always like to consider it the heart of, heart of the library, because so much activity happens there. And I recognize that when you walk into the library and you see the circulation and you're checking out your materials, whether it be at the desk or at self-check, you may think, this looks pretty good, right? It's aesthetically pleasing, because there were smart decisions made when we were, when we were choosing the, the products to put there. What I really wanted to focus on today was sightlines, and the issues that we have with the current placement of our circulation desk. While the circulation desk is totally functional, and we would love to keep it, and just move that to hit what we're calling our sightline issue. The issue really being, when you walk into the library as a patron, you don't see any staff, because we are so offset from the entrance ways, that people can skirt around and just go right up the stairs, and they come in this parking lot entrance right up the stairs, really without seeing a staff member, and importantly, without a staff member seeing them. So for some, maybe kids that we've had a little issues with, you know, they have found a way to sneak by us, we have tried to address that by having roving staff, but we just engage with, with other patrons, so it's still, that sightline issue is, is certainly a real problem. In addition to the, the sightline being a problem, we also have the issue of patrons that walk in and don't inherently know what to do. If you spend any time in our lab, in our lobby, and I suggest that you do, just sit even in those chairs, you will see what I call a deer-in-headlights look from a lot of people. They don't know where to return their materials, because the hold shelves are basically hiding those, those two induction stations where the materials are returned. There's too much going on, just visually, it's confusing, so they can be standing right, right next to it, and they still don't understand where to return that. So by the reconfiguration that's proposed, we will be moving those holds to where basically the desk is now, and I think that would just help so much, just with patrons understanding what to do. Everyone likes to be self-sufficient, right? And to have to ask someone something as simple as, where do I return this material? To me means it's not working the way it should be. In addition to that, our service desk right now is right next to the café. The café is heavily, heavily used, which is its purpose, right? And that's wonderful, but it really does infringe on some of our patron interactions, especially if you're talking about something maybe of a little sensitive nature, where a patron may have gone to our material collection agency for unreturned materials, and everybody can hear that conversation. And that's uncomfortable, certainly for, for staff, but most importantly, it's really uncomfortable for patrons. So by having that hold area where the service desk is right now, and moving that desk over, that would allow that, that barrier with sound, and just, I think it would just really help with those patron interactions. So those were just a couple of things I really wanted to highlight to you, as to why a really seemingly beautiful area isn't working. It's not that it's not aesthetically pleasing, it's just not working because of the location of things. Does anyone have any questions?
Then where are the self-checkout? Those are, those are going to be moved as part of this process as well, right?
Correct, yeah. So those would be moved over by where the holds will be moved, so where the current circulation desk is right now, as well as one, possibly two, in the lobby area, more like pushed out by what we call like the pinwheels, probably along those brick pillars. So we always, always, always want to keep the self-checks as, as close proximity to the self-service holds, because our penetration rate of self-service holds right now is about seventy-six percent. That's, that's huge, and if you put the service desk in between those, it's just going to plummet. People won't walk by the service desk to go check out their own holds, and, and we really want to keep that penetration rate up. Does that answer?
That's really thoughtful information to me. I haven't thought of most of those things.
Oh, good, I'm glad, I'm glad, thank you.
And then is the information desk going to be totally removed?
The information desk will actually stay exactly where it is, and it will be used for display, and as it is now, it will be used for things, ongoing surveys and feedback opportunities. So right now, it has the How Do We Do Comment Form on it, that's kind of our default, that will go there. Some of you may have seen that recently we had a survey about doing genres for our DVDs and asking people how they wrote. and asking people how they browse for DVDs in the library. We had sign up for our raffle, our author lunch and was there. In September, it will be voter registration. So if that's just kind of an ongoing, different kinds of feedback and different kinds of passive opportunities for folks to do different things here at the library. And we're anticipating using the other end of the countertop for more displays.
So the function of that will change over time and that will tend to raise the curiosity of some of our patrons, so they'll go and see, what's here now?
Survey of the month or whatever it turns out to be.
But certain things like voter registration, which are very important, seasonal and so forth.
And what we, I know we were going back and forth on the family restrooms as far as whether or not we'd be the small-toileted one versus both versus neither, what did this, what was the final bid?
The final bid was one and one.
Okay.
One with and one without.
Okay, yeah, I think that's where, yeah, that's my recollection.
Yes, that's where we decided to be.
With the larger.
Yes, because the one has the little bump out in the wall and so we went with the slightly larger one will have both, both size.
Should present a fun opportunity for signage.
Yes. I believe the toddler potty is the signage used at the brick building.
Good, I think that was a reasonable either compromise somehow, but it was. Still provide service and saves us money.
Right. I think suggestions that we could have only a toddler potty in one side and adults on the other side instead of a toddler and an adult.
Yeah, that was after the bids had gone away. Was there anything else like with value engineering that you wanted to highlight, Jason?
Pretty, maybe to save some money on some light fixtures by some minor substitutions.
Like how does that work? Like who is value engineering? What, you have a project in place and then somebody?
So when we when we talk with the lowest apparent apparent low bidders, we reach out for ideas on, you know, how do we, you know, effectively reduce the cost of the project? So these are some of the ideas that were given to us and, you know, we felt they had sense, like the tile on that Julie was describing was actually from the architect and also helps us get the tile on time as well for the project as well as save us money.
Something interesting in this project that number one, the largest of those, I agree with you, the items really doesn't change the scope of work at all.
No, you're getting the same scope as a lot of product substitutions, changing out some of the flush valves and the glassware faucets, different faucets and, you know, substituting tile. We're going to leave the diffusers up on the second floor, but we're going to change out all that and see the tile.
A lot of content things.
Is there somebody on the project that's weighing what's being substituted for potential further costs? I know I've had some experiences where light fixtures, even though they may be less expensive, replacement bulbs are horrendously expensive. Things of that nature, bathroom fixtures where they may be less expensive, but they break six months into operation and then you got maintenance and not all the people now I guess fix that. Sometimes that's just not good value. Is there somebody putting that level of expertise into these kinds of?
Yeah, so when we get those ideas, we're the first line on that and we present to Dan Port, the architect, and then Eve's really been in on it, you've seen a lot of those things and kind of get a group discussion with regard to those items, make sure there's nothing that stands out to anyone logically.
If any, would the faucets remain as simple, they're more of a mechanical function versus a sensor, so I mean it's.
We took into consideration replacement costs like you had mentioned as well. So when it comes to flush valves and and diaphragms and vacuum breakers and everything else, as opposed to a two-hundred-and-seventy-five-dollar battery that's in a sensor-driven one, it's just with the amount of use that it's going to get with kids and everything else, at this point in time, it makes a lot of sense to just do manual. It's not saying that we can't go further on down the road and switch it out if we want to. I mean, that's something I can definitely do, but at this time, you know, it just makes sense in order to meet our numbers and everything else and also give everybody the best that we can, this is the best option to go with.
Good work, Jason.
I think we also need to point out, it's in your package, that the parent low on the flooring had some discrepancies in the bid. So at this, we are going with the second place bidder, just to make you aware of that, kind of highlighting. That information is really things that Jason brought forward, been reviewed by the library attorney, and that's all in the left.
Yes, and the attorney was comfortable with qualifying that low bidder based on the information provided by by the construction management firm about, you know, they didn't use the right bid form, they did not, there were so many little things that they didn't do right in in that bid, and so we did include that letter that enumerated all of those for you in the board packet so you can see all of those.
Have you done work, John, with the various contractors that were chosen?
All of them.
I appreciate that letter being included because itemizing those, those things totally supported your decision, I think. For a public project, they just didn't seem to do their homework.
I agree.
Yeah, that's not very good on a public project, not good on any level.
The numbers came in, you know, very, very close to it. There's not a huge delta between the two.
Was easy, but I agree with you.
Right. Did appreciate the summary pages because it took me a little while to figure out the actual bid submissions.
Yes.
Sort of matching out what we were.
A lot of information in there.
Yeah.
Any other questions regarding the 2018 construction project bid award comments?
Just a procedural thing, we're just, do we, well, I guess we accept the proposed bidders.
Yes.
Are we not making final decisions on all the alternatives at this point?
I think we are.
Yes, and the motion would be to approve the recommendation to award as presented or may changes to the lowest responsible bidders, that is the language that our attorneys had requested.
That was a good question, I'm sorry. I want to make sure that you all understand that. But I would move that we accept the recommended bidders and.
Recommendation to award to lowest responsible bidders.
Lowest responsible bidder as recommended.
Before we have a second on that, can you just talk about the items three, alternates three and seven that were not included?
Okay, alternate three was the replacement of the exhaust fan.
Yeah, exhaust fan in front of the family restroom.
Yeah, and Ian actually was inspired by that to do additional exhaust fans in other restrooms in the building while he was doing that exhaust fan. And then the alternate seven was an upgraded light fixture in the wellness room in the staff lounge that we just decided it was too much.
It's going from a recess fixture to a pendant style fixture, so recess fixtures are not really going to be installed.
The cost did not bear out to change that.
Okay, thank you. Do you, so we have a motion on the 2018 construction project bid award. Do we have any other comments or a second on that?
No, second.
We have a motion to approve the 2018 construction project bid award, has been seconded. Caitlin, could you proceed with the roll call?
Trustee Earl?
Yes.
Trustee Edlin?
Yes.
Trustee Gudani?
Yes.
Trustee Humphries?
Yes.
Trustee Stapleton?
Yes.
Trustee Greger?
Yes. The 2018 construction project bid award has been approved, thank you.
You're moving forward. Woo!
Thank you all for your input, I appreciate it. All right, we're on to agenda item number 10, library director's report.
Woo, well, thank you all, we are very excited, the staff is very excited to move forward with this project. Our our next fund will be figuring out the timing of the project now that that we're putting all of those things out and when we will actually be doing this construction. As you can see, everybody got your discoveries, and now here on the bottom of the discoveries for September, October, is the Harden Our Dust, which says that we'll be doing a construction project and to watch our Facebook and the library's website for more information about timing. So we're hoping everybody takes that to heart and watches our our social media, et cetera, to make sure they know what's going on in the library. Speaking of which, there will be some more of that sort of thing going on even sooner, starting tomorrow. Ian will be doing further lighting upgrades over the CD collection and AV over all the way into teen central in some of those fixtures that were saved in the 2014 project. He will be converting those to LEDs and will be actually doing that during the day and roping off, we've got the scissor lift coming, it does fit in the elevator, so okay. And we will simply be roping off sections of that, having signage of as in people to please ask a staff member if they need to retrieve items from that area. We're hoping to have that completed within about a week. And staff has really decided to be moving forward with yet more of our big lighting projects. This has just been amazing to be able to do those in a cost-effective way right away and then we'll be able to take those off that capital needs assessment when we do our next year's update. So, woo, that'll be it.
Really good question, real quick. Sometimes in the past, we've had a little display adjacent to the to the work so that people can see not only what's going on, but why, explaining a little bit about what we're doing, upgrading, saving electricity, we're getting greener, all those things. Just to keep our keep our customers informed.
That's probably a really great first main display for that info desk because I think that will be open or at least partially open during our construction period and we'll also be having Melody make a whole bunch of posters and things, so we'll be able to put that up.
And we, have we moved that to agenda item number 11?
Oh, I still have a couple more. Community Engagement Coordinator position, the, if anybody knows anyone, those are open until Monday the third, so Community Engagement Coordinator, it's still up on the library's website, dglibrary.org/jobs. Go and have a look. This is for our person to be out in the community doing, talking about partnerships with other organizations, helping us to build those relationships and those partnerships, and also being in charge of our outreach. We do have a lot of our strategic plan, we have a lot of strategic plan goals that kind of revolve around those sorts of partnerships, so we're really looking for that perfect fit person. So if you know of anybody who might fit, make sure that they are applying for the job, Jen and I will be reviewing those, all those resumes and applications next week and and starting to set up our interviews, so should be good. Also highlighting a grant, we are working with the National Alliance for Mental Illness, Metro Suburban, and the DuPage offices for them. They have a grant from the Community Memorial Foundation to offer free mental health first aid training, and we will be offering three sessions of that training. We'll be doing two exclusively for our staff. We were inspired by a program that our management team went to at the Oak Park Public Library. They have every single one of their entire staff go through this. We're starting with just our, the people who are in charge at our library, and every single one of those staff members will be going to one of these mental health first aid trainings. So we're very excited about that and it's free to all participants and we're we're really looking forward to that and we're offering, one of those sessions will be open to the public. We are starting with priority registration being offered to our school districts and the village and the park district. So they have priority registration and then we'll be opening it up to the general public, so really looking forward to that. Your 2018 summer reading club recaps will be coming in your next board meeting packet and you probably saw in this packet, the unfortunate we did not receive a grant from the Timken Foundation at this time. We are hoping to get a little more feedback from them about that initial grant proposal and to see what we can do to make any future grant proposals better. Overall, we are moving forward and the next policy section on my agenda is personnel, so that's going to be my big push in September.
Are we applying for the Schwann Foundation again for something?
Not at this point, we're not, the adult and teen services staff isn't ready to take on the next round of digitization things, they haven't quite figured out what that's going to look like. And so they're holding off for now, but the Schwann Foundation does continue to be a great option for any of those digitization, particularly for local history projects.
Do you have any initial feedback on the mental health first aid training? I saw that Ian had attended it.
Yeah, and I believe Dave has attended also.
I attended.
Oh, okay.
We we had a session across the street at the First Congregational Church a few months ago. We had about forty-five people in attendance and it is an outstanding, full day, I think it's an eight-hour course.
Yes.
And it is, if you're really interested in that, talk to me because mental health first aid is just what it sounds like. It is immediate intervention, if you will, and recognition and perhaps referral. It's not curing it, it's recognizing it and you've seen a lot of cases in society where if that had been done, might head it off some tragedies. But even in smaller ways, it's just excellent. This NAMI is outstanding organization, so for all, we're doing that.
And if we fill up all three of these trainings, we're hoping to be able to get more on the dock in the future.
Okay, we're now on to agenda item 11, trustee comments and requests for information. Do you have any comments or requests for information from the trustees? All right, okay. We're now on to agenda item number 12, the adjournment, and I am the president, adjourn the meeting. Thank you very much, everybody.